Good evening, welcome to tonight's Council of the Whole, Thursday, August 11th. It is now 6:16, and we're going to begin Agenda Item 1, call meeting to order. Agenda Item 2, roll call please.
Counselor Eau Claire.
Present.
Counselor Calasco.
Present.
Counselor Clements.
Present.
Counselor DePietro.
Delayed.
Counselor Estrada.
Delayed.
Counselor McKenzie.
Here.
Counselor Miana.
Excused.
Counselor Steves.
Delayed.
Five present, three delayed, one excused.
Thank you.
Six present, two delayed, one excused. Oh, Counselor Becky, I'm sorry. Counselor Becky. Six present, two excused, one delayed.
Thank you. Agenda Item 3, Consider and Accept Council of the Whole Meeting Minutes of May 26, 2016.
Some of.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I was in the hospital.
Correct. So we have two abstentions. Would a simple hand vote, all those in favor? Yes, okay. All right. So we have 1, 2, 3, 4, 2 abstentions. Agenda Item 3, excuse me, 4 is discussion and landfill contamination. So I just want to set some ground rules for tonight's meeting. We are going to be here, it is extremely hot here tonight in this room. This will be a 2-hour limit meeting. We will not go past 8 o'clock. If we need to schedule another meeting to discuss this further, I will. Also, we are here to discuss simply landfill contamination. We're not here to discuss any other topics tonight. We're here to discuss this. And I was expecting a bigger crowd, but again, I've set some ground rules for tonight's meeting. We're going to limit, we're going to limit the discussions and the questions to Southbridge residents only. If there's residents from other communities that want to ask questions, we want, I want you to submit those questions to me via email, or you can leave me a copy tonight, and I will make sure that the professionals, our consultant, Ty and Bond, our town manager, responds in a timely manner. Southbridge residents only tonight. You will be limited to a 2-minute comments if you're making comments. If you're making questions, it will be a 3-minute limit, giving enough response to go back and forth in between the professionals that might be answering your question. Again, I want to make this as simple as possible and as respectful as possible tonight. Again, we want to hear some information that there was a DEP meeting tonight, this morning, and we want to hear that, those results, but at the same time, we want to, if there is questions, we want to be able to ask our consultants those questions tonight, all right? Thank you. I'm going to turn it over to our town manager, Mr. San Angelo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, members of the town council. As the town council is aware, and citizens are aware, as a result of newspaper articles and a report that was turned into our State Department of Environmental Protection, there's a lot of new information as it relates to our landfill. One of the reasons for tonight's meeting is that we knew that we had a scheduled meeting today with the Department of Environmental Protection to discuss the recent IRA that was turned into them. I called DEP and requested the meeting in order to present that information with our consultants, Ty and Bond. We did invite Casella's staff and engineering team to be there, just if there were any technical questions that were asked of them by the Department of Environmental Protection. So that meeting did occur today. I would like to say that it was a very good meeting. I appreciate the regional director of DEP, Mary Jude, I think it's Pixley or Pixley is her last name, and correct me, I apologize if I said it wrong, and a lot of their technical staff were at the meeting as well. They listened to our presentation, and clearly, one of the positions we have taken is that there is no evidence that any contamination is coming from this landfill. And a lot of money and a lot of scientific research has gone in to that position, and we wanted to clearly state to DEP why we believe that that is so, and we wanted our consultant, that works specifically for the town, to outline those reasons to the Department of Environmental Protection. I'm going to ask Jeff Arps, our consultant, to go through those items point by point again. Tonight, we provided copies of a summary of those issues, why we believe there's no contamination coming from the landfill. We gave it out to the residents here tonight, and they will be on the PowerPoint screen for residents. DEP's response was very professional. It was a very interesting conversation between all the parties. Most of the presentation, again, was done by David Murphy from Ty and Bond and Jeffrey Arps. DEP has only had a couple of days with this information, so they've not had a chance to have their technical staff review at all, but they listened closely to what we stated. They've committed to us that, over the next month, they're going to spend a great deal of time with their professionals, both in their regional office and in their state office, to review all of the data that we provided. Want to again stress that right now, there's somewhere in the neighborhood of $2 million worth of scientific research and money that has gone into trying to find out where that contamination is coming from. Basically, let me say it this way, seeing if it's coming from our landfill, because that was our interest. And I want to make a point clear to everybody so they understand. We've heard a lot of pointing at the landfill. A lot of people have been looking at the landfill, saying, "This is the contamination." And most of you will realize that I've said nothing. And the reason I've stated nothing on this issue, in spite of hearing all kinds of issues from other people, is because I wanted to wait until the facts were known before I opened my mouth. I don't want to, just because the landfill happens to be there, say, "Oh, that's the landfill that's causing the contamination." I would rather speak from more of waiting till our scientists, waiting till our environmental engineers looked at it and gave me some facts in which I could talk intelligently upon. Today is the first day that I'm going to be doing that, because now I've had an opportunity to read those reports. And quite frankly, I said, and I want to make it clear, I said to the town administrator of the town of Charlton, I said to the town administrator of the town of Sturbridge, that if it turns out that this landfill is the reason for that contamination, that the town of Southbridge would be willing to come up to the plate and fix the problem. I also, as the town council knows, I said that to the town council, based upon whatever information, we were going to take a look at all of the data, and we are going to go with the facts. And if those facts led it, it was the town of Southbridge's responsibility to clean up this environmental problem, the town of Southbridge would step up to the plate. I was ready and willing to accept that responsibility and was waiting for the results. The conversation I had with Mary Pixley of the DEP was just that. I said to her clearly that if it turns out at Southbridge, we will take care of it. It's our responsibility. And the sad part about that, it's a big responsibility, and it would have landed on the taxpayers of Southbridge. It's one of the things we would have to do. The reality is, and what I'm, I guess I'm pleased about, and I am from a, from a Southbridge perspective, or from a Southbridge citizen perspective, is that the facts have basically come out now that it's not the landfill causing the contamination. Now, DEP is going to review our information. DEP has not taken a position on that yet, but from all the money that's been invested and all the research that's been done, that's the position Southbridge has now taken. I also want to make it clear that that doesn't mean that Southbridge won't be part of a solution. As many people have indicated, and we've looked at and thinking that it might be our landfill, we actually went forward and started doing some research about the cost of bringing city water, Southbridge water, to those residents in Charlton. That was something we've done. So Ty and Bond has been asked to look at that. I know that Casella's people have been asked to look at some of the initial costs of that, and they've actually come out with some estimates as to what it might be. If this contamination is found to be on the Charlton side, where frankly, we believe it is, we are willing and ready to be a partner with Charlton to provide water. The real question is, who is going to pay for those water lines? I like to believe that it's going to be whoever contributed to that contamination. You know, who is the responsible party for that contamination? I don't want it to be the town of Charlton. I think that we need to, as a state, protect those residents of the town of Charlton that have gotten contamination. Really, the question is, I don't think Southbridge taxpayers should have to pay for it if it's not their responsibility. It may not be Charlton, the town's responsibility, it may be some independent company, we just don't know the answer to that. What was made clear to me from the Department of Environmental Protection today, as part of our presentation, we have looked at four potential, and I want to be really, really clear, four potential locations that we believe the contamination may, may possibly be coming from. And we have asked the Department of Environmental Protection to give Casella access to that property so we can do some initial testing. To Casella's credit, they are willing to do that, to look and do some initial testing, and depending upon what costs might be involved, they're willing to try to partner with the state to try to find out where the contamination is coming from, because at the end of the day, I think it's in everyone's interest to protect those residents in Charlton. So that's where we are right now. I'm appreciative that DEP has stated that they have the power to get access to those properties and are going to start working to do that moving forward. So we're expecting them to go forward, to get access to those properties, to give us a chance to go on and look at those properties. If we do, DEP will be a partner with us, obviously, to look at those locations. So DEP is reviewing everything that's happening in this process. With that, I want to turn it over to Jeffrey, I'm sorry, David Murphy from Ty and Bond to explain some of this, and we'll eventually turn it over to Jeffrey Arps to get into those specific details. Again, we're basing all of this on scientific research. With that, Mr. Murphy.
Good evening. My name is David Murphy. I'm a principal of Ty and Bond. We're a firm of 280 environmental engineers and scientists. I have 31 years of professional engineering experience in landfill engineering. We're here today at the request of the town, specifically with the charge, to find out whether or not this contamination is part of the landfill, coming from the landfill. That was the mission we were given. We were not given the mission to do anything else, other than to find, attempt to find the source and see if there's a connection. I think Mr. Pelletier actually said, "Assume that it is the landfill and prove otherwise." We have taken that mission on very seriously. Not only Jeff, but other LSPs in our firm, other hydrogeologists in our firm, other engineers in our firm, have aggressively looked at this, reviewed this, and the report was submitted Monday. Just want to quickly, some slides that we went over Monday, to reiterate, the town of Southbridge owns the landfill. We are the licensed site professional in the engineering firm for the town, and the operator is Casella Waste, with Sandborne Head in Gold or Associates, as the two engineering firmings representing Casella. We represent the town of Southbridge. It's a 52-acre site, began in '79, constructed in multiple phases, and there's, there was an assumption at the very beginning that it's the unlined portion of the site that is the source of the contamination. That was the assumption that we all started with. That was the assumption that the state jumped to at the very beginning, rightly so. Again, just for the graphic, the purple is the unlined portion of the landfill that sits above glacial till, that does not have a state-of-the-art liner system as it does today. Those areas of the site have been capped and sealed, so it's dry and tumed, is what we call it. The light blue on the left are the more newer phases. Those have a double composite liner system, which means that there's a full leak detection system under those portions. With that, I think I, I'll just turn this right over to Jeff, and we'll move this along quickly.
Thank you, Dave. I'm Jeff Arps. I'm the LSP for the site with Ty and Bond, working for the town of Southbridge. This is roughly the same presentation we gave Monday, so I'll try to be a little quick with it. As most of you know, there's a portable well sampling program that was required as part of the Phase 7 of the landfill, which requires that houses around the landfill be sampled. There's a triannual program whereby all of the houses get, a third of the houses get sampled every year, so that all the houses get sampled within 3 years. As part of that program, in September 2015, there was a detection of trichlorethylene and some other volatile organic compounds in one of the wells. That was reported to Mass DEP, and Mass DEP made the determination to take the project out of the solid waste division and move it into the waste site cleanup division. This is a map of the site. You have the landfill here. This is H-Foot Road here. The, we're calling kind of Ground Zero for the, for the release is 65 H-Foot Road, which is this L-shaped parcel here. This is Eleanor Lane, which is also part of the monitoring program. You have additional houses that are being monitored down here on Berry Corner Road. So as part of the, because of the reporting, Mass DEP requires an immediate response action. We drew a 500-foot radius around the houses that had detections, and then sampled all of those houses within that radius. There were additional detections. We had to do another 500-foot radius, such we ended up with 3 500-foot radii around a pretty large group of houses. We're sampling about 48 houses on a quarterly basis, in addition to the landfill monitoring program, the regular triennial program. And in addition to that, there's a number of subsurface investigations going on around the landfill. So this is a map showing the various parcels. The parcels in green were the cleaner parcels. The ones in red are the ones that had the VOCs, and you can see the various radiuses, radii that were drawn around the houses with detections. So Mass DEP initially, their conceptual site model, which is what we call, you know, trying to figure out where it start, how did it get to where it's gotten, and who's potentially being exposed to it. Their CSM was that the landfill has leaked, that there is contamination in the groundwater, and that it is migrating to the northeast toward those houses on H-Foot Road. Their take was that, you know, to address this condition, that a municipal water line would be, be the best, the best remedy. So there's a few, a few problems with that. Initially, if you're looking at, H-Foot Road is on a ridge. The house at 65 is almost at the top of that ridge, so it's basically the highest point in this whole area. So the 80-foot differential is based on superficial topography, but we've also looked at, you know, the depth of the wells and the depth of the groundwater, and concluded that the water on H-Foot Road is above the groundwater at the landfill. That makes it virtually impossible for the landfill leachate or leachate groundwater to migrate up the hill to H-Foot Road. The other issue is that there are 6 VOCs outlined there in the third bullet, which have been detected in the houses. The houses that have TCE have all 6 of these compounds. They occur together, and we have not seen that similar pattern at the landfill anywhere. 1-4-dioxide is the only, is the only compound that's detected consistently at the landfill. So 1-4-dioxide, as you probably know, it's a kind of a new contaminant. EPA just came out, lowered the standard for drinking water. It is a highly miscible compound. That means it dissolves in groundwater almost infinitely, and so that as the groundwater migrates, the 1-4-dioxide migrates with it basically at the same rate. The other compounds, the TCE and the dichlorethanes, will migrate slower because they're retarded by the, by the geology. 1-4-dioxide, I know you've all heard this a million times, but, you know, it is in household products, it is in detergent, shampoos, and other products, which are discharged to septic systems as people use them, and we think that that might be a, that might be a contributing So 1-4-dioxide is considered a likely carcinogen by EPA. The drinking water guideline for Massachusetts is 0.3 micrograms per liter. There has been some studies done on it, and one of the studies that we read indicates that 0.3 might be overly conservative, and that a standard of 350 micrograms per liter might be more appropriate. But, you know, we're not going by that. We're going by the one the DEP has selected, which is the 0.3. We do have some issues with those of you who have had your well sampled. You know that, you know, when you're trying to look at 0.3 parts per billion, you get things, you're really pushing the limits of the analytical methodology, and you get a lot of what we call estimated concentrations, which are below the levels that the laboratory can see reliably, but above where they can see. So that's where you get the J-qualified results, which you've probably heard about. So Sandborne Head is performing the bulk of the fieldwork in consultation with me. I review the work plans, have input on that, and, you know, and direct the, direct the work that's being done. They've installed 2 additional bedrock monitoring wells, and in addition, they've been performing geophysics on some of the, some of the portable wells that are impacted, including 65 H-Foot Road. Some of the technologies they've been using are optical televiewer, acoustical televiewer, heat pulse flow meter, I'm sorry, and various other technologies. So, you know, by monitoring the water in, at the various depths, they can get some ideas, we get some ideas about which fractures are flowing, which water is similar to other water, you know, if there's vertical flow within the borehole, that kind of thing. The optical televiewer is just that, it's a camera that goes down the hole and looks at the, looks at the bedrock, allows us to identify fracture zones. The acoustical televiewer then goes in and provides additional information on fracture locations, orientation of fractures, and that gives us ideas, you know, about where the groundwater would probably be flowing. And the heat pulse flow meter, as I said, we monitor the temperature of the water and allows you to see which way the water's flowing in the borehole. So there are a lot of deep boreholes at the landfill. There was an old, an old production well, it was 933 feet deep. There was another 592-foot well at the airport. The 65 H-Foot Road well is 476 feet deep. And then the new boreholes that were drilled by Sandborne Head, SH3 and SH4, are located on the western, I'm sorry, the eastern side of the landfill, between the landfill and H-Foot Road. So after you characterize the borehole, they do what's called Packer testing, which basically, it's an inflatable, inflatable bladder that goes down. You bracket off the fracture zones, pump the water out, so that you're getting water that's actually from those fractures, and that gives us an idea of where the contamination is depth-wise, and that can help inform us on where the possible source might be and where it might be migrating to or from. So very consistently, all of the bedrock boreholes that have been looked at with the geophysics show that the fractures are oriented in a southeast to northwest direction, with steep dipping to the northwest. These, these fractures dominate the groundwater flow. You know, the overburdened groundwater flow, that's the water above the bedrock, flows to the northwest, and what we found in the bedrock is that it mimics that as well, following the fractures to the northwest. So with the, some of the highest concentrations detected at 65 H-Foot Road are much higher than what we've detected historically ever at the landfill. You know, as I said, those 6 compounds have not been detected together, but of those 6, you know, we have sporadic detections, but they're low detections, single-digit part per billion ranges, and are not representative of what we consider to be a source-type concentration. So this map shows the groundwater flow direction. You can see that it's clearly to the northwest, not to the northeast, toward H-Foot Road. And then the bedrock as well, it's almost identical, shows to the northwest. And you'll note that the contours are extended up into the neighborhood on H-Foot Road, and that's a result of transducers, which have been placed in various wells in that area. You can see the red dots, the orange dots. Those represent the wells that have the transducers in them, and we're able to connect the contours from the landfill all the way up to H-Foot Road, and it's consistently even up there to the northwest. Oops. Oh, shoot. Okay, so, you know, as Ron said today, the, as Ron said today, we had a meeting with DEP, and the, the outcome of that was that, you know, they're still not convinced that the landfill's not the source. They're requiring that we continue to look at that. They do have an outside expert looking at it, and they're going to have it reviewed by WPI as well. And they're still, they're expecting the results about 4 weeks, and they're still, still requesting that we consider the water line. As Ron said, we are looking at, possibly, looking at other properties in the area. There's some historic use of chlorinated solvents in the area, and so we're talking to DEP about getting access to those properties for that. And in the meantime, Casella is still providing bottled water to some residents. They've installed treatment systems for other residents, and the ones that have trace detections, we are performing monthly sampling, so we catch it if there is a problem. So based on a preponderance of the evidence, you know, as I said, groundwater does not flow uphill, the chemical signature doesn't match, and, you know, based on those, we're pretty comfortable that the landfill is not the source of the contamination. And I think we'll find that with additional evaluation, that hopefully that will bear that out. I'm sorry, Ron, we didn't make the 2.6 conceptual site model summary. That was from the report that was submitted on Monday. I didn't get to put that on a slide, I apologize for that, but it was handed out to everyone. So I think, you know, everything I just talked about is covered in here, and if anyone has specific questions on that, obviously, we'll open it up for questions. The other thing is that these reports are all publicly available. The Mass DEP website has a web browser. All of the, all the reports that have been filed are available there at that link, and if you have to look around the site, the release tracking number is 2-19678, so you can put that in and search it if, if the link above doesn't get you where you want to be. So with that, I guess we open it up to questions.
First, a couple of things. I really want to stress the, we're trying to make sure that everybody has every bit of the available, available data we have. So that website's extremely important to those of you watching on TV and those in the room. Want to write it down, the full report that we gave to DEP is what you'll find on that. So, you know, now it, DEP is really in a state of, they haven't really reviewed all this information yet, so they haven't made any judgment on this information yet. That is what's going to happen over the next month. Now, one of the things that I found, and probably many of you find, as you listen to this information, it's very technical in nature, and I think in the last year, I've learned everything I've never wanted to know about landfills, but it's the way it is. When it's important to you, you learn. So I understand if you've heard something technically, you don't quite understand it, we'll try to rephrase it in less technical terms and try to give you a simpler answer. So if you do have those kind of questions, we'll try to, try to get at that for you. We want you to understand what this data means, and sometimes, I found, it's very difficult. With that, Mr. Chairman, you're...
Thank you, Mr. San Angelo. I'm going to ask, I'm going to request that you come back and sit here, and I'm going to ask Mr. Arps and Mr. Murphy to join us on the dais, on the far two...
These two?
Yes.
Grab seats.
Oh, you can use Counselor Manna's seat, because she is not here. At that point, we can ask the, have the public come up to the podium, and you guys can answer questions from there. Again, please, if you're coming up to the podium, please let me know if you're going to do a comment or a question, because I do not want to interrupt you. I don't want to interrupt your statement, your time here. Again, we will do our best to answer your questions. I will not be answering no questions, because I'm not a professional, unless you direct something towards the council, but most, most of the questions will be answered by our consultants, our professional. And I want to make sure you understand that we are not going to allow politically motivated questions here. This is simply to discuss the landfill contamination. And I'm going to say, please state your name, your address, you have 2 or 3 minutes, and please keep it respectful.
Dan Butler, 35 Brookside Road, Southbridge. I would assume this would be a question, to start off with a question. Our town, you know, you come to the town hall, you got a, the assessor's office and all that. They use Google Earth a lot of times. I've gotten printouts and stuff, you know, they, I guess, I don't know how, how you guys consider it, but Google Earth, to us, is pretty accurate website as far as altitudes and all that good stuff, you know, sea level, all that stuff, and with the town using that for, for properties and stuff.
Mr. Butler, can I, can I just stop you for one second? I'm having a lot of trouble hearing him, so I'm not sure if we can bring him up in our monitors here on top, please, like that I can hear you, because...
Sorry about that. Okay.
Your clock will start, yes.
Yeah, okay.
And I just want to be able to hear you.
Okay, I just want, I guess, start it off as a question, that the town, the town assessor's office, they, they use Google Earth from time to time for, you know, property, property lines, altitude... property, property lines, altitude, stuff like that. So I know I've been down there in the past. I, I live on Caddybrook, and I had some questions about elevation and stuff, and, I mean, it was dead on with what I got for my, my survey. Um, so a lot of, I mean, none of us have, we're, we're, I'm not an engineer, I have no engineering ability, but, uh, if you go on Google Earth, I know this is gonna sound crazy, 'cause I'm just a regular citizen, but, um, I mean, you guys are talking about how the water can't flow upwards and this and that, but, um, if you, if you scan the, the, over the landfill, the highest point of the landfill, which I believe is capped, but it's eight hundred and thirty-six feet, I believe, above sea level. Um, and then you scan around the rest of the landfill, it's roughly, um, I don't know, I saw anywhere from like seven-eighty to eight-oh-two, stuff like that, the rest of it. And then you follow H-foot road, uh, the highest point on H-foot road that they were just talking about, I believe, um, it was around eight-oh-two, uh, feet above sea level and all. Um, and then it pans off northerly and southerly, H-foot road, it drops back down to seven, seven-eighty range. Um, most people have about six-hundred-foot drinking water wells. I assume, uh, your thing said four-seventy-two, I think, for, or four-seventy-six for, uh, the highest point of H-foot road that you're saying. Um, it just, simple math, in, in my mind, still shows water going downward. Um, you, you guys are saying it's going to a north, northwest area or so. I, I mean, I didn't scan over there, 'cause it's mostly woodsy area, but, um, I mean, all these, all these houses that are affected on H-foot road still seem to be below the level of the landfill. I mean, just seems common sense to me that it, water still could be flowing outward. And then we're talking about, uh, other possi- possible businesses along the way that, that could be the source of the contamination, but, I mean, the landfill's here, one-sixty-nine, where most of these businesses that I've heard, you know, Board of Health and stuff meetings, talking about possible contamination. I mean, it's, it's, it's quite a significant drop, so water from there can't be flowing up, uphill. I guess, I'm just looking at, maybe if, we see all these, okay, my question-
No, no, Mr. Butler, I just, you've used your three minutes.
That was three minutes? Did you count the first few seconds when you couldn't hear me?
Explaining your question. So, I, I want to be able to now give them an opportunity to address your concern in regards to whether-
Yeah, I'm just looking for-
-water's flowing uphill, downhill-
Yeah, I'm just looking for a more basic, easy-to-understand for everybody.
Again, they will explain-
Okay.
-how they came to that conclusion.
Okay.
Just hold, I just, if you hold, if you hold it, you need it.
Hold, hold on, so keep doing the-
Okay, first time up here. Um, well, you know, the important thing to remember is that the top of the landfill is not where the groundwater flow is occurring. Um, you know, we're looking at the base of the landfill. And, uh, so I think, you know, if you look at where the wetlands are between H-foot road and the landfill, and, uh, you know, I think you'll, you'll find that it's, uh, closer to the, uh, to the eighty-foot number. Um, you know, H-foot road is a variable, you know, it climbs, uh, and it's kinda undulating around the landfill as well. So it kinda depends on where you look, but, you know, just looking kinda generally, average-wise, uh, you know, the landfill is about eighty feet, uh, below H-foot road. Um, now, we tried to address that, you know, the depth of the wells, you look at the bottom of the elevation of the wells, while the wells themselves are that deep, um, the groundwater flow is still dictated by the water depth in that well. So the water depth in the wells up on H-foot road are still well above the groundwater depth at the landfill.
Jump in to add that, that every single well, um, the depth of the well, the depth of the water has all been surveyed, um, by professional land surveyors, so we have a very good control over, uh, and the accuracy over all the, um, uh, the points that we're logging in, including the topography around the landfill in H-foot road.
Thank you. Do we have another citizen? Please state your name, address. You'll have two or three minutes. Please keep it respectful.
Kevin Buxton, twenty-eight Columbus Avenue. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I, I have a specific question I'd like to address in any available time afterwards. I'd like to use for, uh, future closing comments. Um, the Tyon Bond report emphasized the importance of these two unlined sections as the possible, the possibility of being, uh, contamination sites. Has, is it Tyon Bond's report that there is no detected contamination coming from any well within the landsite, landfill site? And in reference to these unlined section, who's, who would be specifically responsible?
Two questions. Uh, there, there were, I'm sorry, there has been compounds detected in the monitoring program, in the monitoring wells around the landfill. But what I was saying was that the six compounds that are detected in the wells up on H-foot road have not been detected together. So all the houses on H-foot road that have trichlorethylene also have the other five compounds. Those six compounds have not been detected together in any monitoring well. As I said, we, we have had historically, I think there was one TCE detection back in twenty-thirteen or something, but the concentrations that were detected historically at the landfill are not, quote, "source-type" concentrations. So if you had a TCE spill, you would have, you'd expect hundreds, thousands of parts per billion of TCE. We do not see levels anywhere near that at the landfill. Um, and, and again, those have been sporadic detections, you know, it's there one time. We're, the landfill monitoring wells are sampled quarterly, so it's four times a year they're sampled. And we've not seen, you know, those six compounds detected together in any monitoring well. So if the landfill was a source, you'd certainly expect to see those six compounds prevalent throughout the groundwater monitoring network, and we do not see that.
A quick follow-up.
Hold on, we-
The second-
Mr. Murphy?
The second question is addressed to us in regards to, um, the unland, um, unlined portion. Mr. Sanangelo.
Thank you, Kevin. It's a very good question, right? So, so the unlined landfill, uh, was there before Casella took over the operation of that landfill. Um, so Casella would make an argument that it's the Town of Southbridge responsible for that unlined portion of the landfill. I mean, first state that these environmental testing that's been gone is saying that there's no contamination covering, coming from any part of the landfill. That's where we are now. If in, if, if it was someday proven it was coming from the unlined landfill, that may, had, may cause a little bit of a legal debate between the Casella operation and us. But it was, in fact, there before Casella took over the operation.
In follow-up to your comments, our partner, our longstanding, good partner, is making an argument that it's the town's liability. Uh, I would request that our administration review the two thousand and seven site assignment, when there was a lot of comments made about the town not having any future liability. Uh, in response to the first question, I would ask Tyon Bond if they could give residents in the town and the administration a timeline when we should be concerned about the monitoring, the contamination coming from the water, monitoring wells, regardless of the H-foot road situation.
I'm not understanding your question, Mr. Buxton.
When should we be concerned? You, you stated that there has been contamination monitored from the landfill-
Detected.
But it is not H-foot road. Your comments were the water's headed in a different direction in H-foot road. My question is, if there are contaminants within this test, sampling around the landfill, when do we be concerned about those, as far as residents, as far as the town, and as far as the administration?
Again, this is Dave Murphy. Um, we work on landfills, municipal landfills across the Commonwealth all the time. Um, the, the Mast DEP has regulations that specifically control and regulate these type of sites. Uh, the procedural steps that are taken, that are required, um, include full capping and continuous thirty years of monitoring. Uh, they monitor those sites in order to find if there's exposure concerns, or if there's risk to public health and safety or the environment as a result of that monitoring. Um, the operation of the landfill, larger landfill, will ultimately close, and there will be a cap put on it, and there'll be a thirty-year monitoring requirement put on that after the, the final capping. If, if the state determines, or the engineers associated with the landfill determine, that there is exposure or a concern, then there are techniques that can be used to either pump and treat that groundwater, or to, um, intercept it and, and send it off for treatment. There's, there's multiple techniques that are used on sites around the country if it gets to that level. But it has to be determined that there's a, there's an exposure and there's a public health concern. So that will be part of the system as this, as the landfill moves forward.
Thank you.
Those, those procedures would be the-
Mr. Buxton, you've reached your limit. Sorry. Sorry. I appreciate-
During a regular meeting, I get up to seven minutes, but I think this is a serious matter, and I think we-
And I understand, but I want to, Mr. Buxton, what I need you to understand is there's other people in the audience. I want to be able to hear them. And you've asked three questions, and all three questions have been answered. And if there's more concerns, please email me your questions, and I will forward them to Tyon Bond, and you will get a response from them. Again, I'm not a professional, so I will not be answering those kinda questions. But again, I want to keep the meeting going so we can entertain all the questions that we may have.
I thank you very much for my three minutes.
Please state your name, address, and please keep it respectful.
My name's John Palowski, three Genesee Street. And I think if Mr. Buxton's frustration, he probably is around my age, and he probably remembers the solemn promise when we switched from the selectman town meeting form of government, that a town citizen would never be cut offshore when addressing the town council. So that may have something to do with his frustration and mine. Uh, one question I have, a, a figure of two million dollars for this study was mentioned. Is any of that being paid for by the town?
I think the answer is no at this point.
Okay, so even though these folks are representing the town, I hope you can see that before, in, let's say, a trial, someone's upset that they can't use their water or breathe air, that it's, it's going to be sus-, not sus-, I don't wanna use the word suspicious, but these things are, you know, like, the way that we have, like, are, some of the people in town are paid by, you know, it's, and I'm not even gonna comment on this, 'cause I haven't read the entire report, but I'm just curious, and I heard some today, I didn't catch the last time. I tell you, jury's gonna, eyes are gonna, I mean, this is, isn't really easy to follow, 'cause not too many people are excited about this subject, unless your water, uh, you know, you can't shower in your water safely or whatever. I don't think a lot of people really care why their water's no good. But it's gonna be hard to convince a jury that it has nothing to do with the landfill. But two things that startled me, 'cause I, I couldn't understand when you have wells as much as six hundred feet deep, how you can call that going uphill. So are you saying the groundwater at the landfill is six hundred feet below the landfill?
No, no.
So how is it going up now?
There's an analogy that someone else used. If you take a clear tube of water, and, you know, if you have six feet of water, or you have sixty feet of, if you have a sixty-foot tube or a hundred-foot tube, if you fill that up with water, no matter what you do, that elevation stays the same.
Yes.
So we're not looking at the bottom of the well, we're looking at the top of the water surface, 'cause the top of the water is where, is what dictates the flow. So you can't have, you know, if you were to pull and put your thumb over one end of the tube and pick it up, now you've got this uphill thing, where you let go and it equilibrates. So you have, you know, what, what drives the flow of the water is, is the column, is the water column, is the head.
When you say the well, you're speaking of the well at the resident's home?
The well at the resident's home. The well, the bottom of the well is six hundred feet, but the top of the water column is well above that, is actually well above the landfill.
But it's being pumped up, so it's not like it's being siphoned up. It's being pumped up.
Right.
So what difference, I mean, of course, the water can go uphill if there's a pump.
Well, the, the influence of the pump is very limited. The, the bore hole-
Okay, see, this is, I don't think they could teach me if I went to engineering school. I mean, I, if you, if you have contaminants that are six feet below, and you're telling me that the reason's on the top, is 'cause water doesn't go up, but you have an electric pump that's bringing the water up. I, I am sorry, I don't buy that, but I didn't go through school for the things you went through, so I don't really wanna comment on that. But it seems like people are thinking, if this is disproven, it means the landfill is safe. This got, this isn't even on my top ten list of reasons I'm not comfortable with the landfill, but that's, that's neither here or there. I'm, I'm very concerned about the litigation, this stuff, and whether Casella's responsible or we're responsible. I don't get how, why that makes a difference, because you've got a contract, but verbal commitments, especially in a town meeting in front of everybody, verbal commitments have legal standing too. It's just the town doesn't wanna, doesn't seem to wanna defend itself. It seems like everything's being controlled from outside of the town. We had a council here a year ago that said they're against the landfill, and they're full speed ahead on the landfill. So I don't get it. There are broken site assignment conditions-
You've hit your, your time limit.
Pardon?
You've hit your time limit-
So their time counts against me?
And Mr. Sanangelo wants to respond back to you.
So, so a couple of questions that you asked. First of all, uh, the town protects itself, and, and we have an environmental attorney representing the town, looking at all of the issues as to contracts and who's responsible. That is clearly being done, and we have a high-quality environmental attorney working for us. Secondarily, the issue of, you, you got into the issue of who's paying and, and Tyon Bond's loyalty, so to speak, as to, let me make it perfectly clear, they work for the town, period. They don't represent the land, the, or Casella in any way at all.
In Southbridge. They do in other towns.
I'm talking about this issue with Southbridge, they represent us, they are paid directly from us. If you understand the, the contract that was put in place, the town at that time wanted to make sure that it protected the town. So it made Casella provide us the money to pay for our own consultants and engineers, but it's the town who pays that money. It's not coming from Casella. It's clear, and on the year that I've worked with them, it's clear that they represent and work for me, uh, and work for the Town of Southbridge. So I have no concerns whatsoever about that.
You know, this theory that this started, some of these things could have been from the seventies, I don't understand why they didn't show up eight years ago. They started to show up eight years ago, small amounts. That's when they started providing water to Mrs. Cooper. And I don't see why, what is it, forty-somewhat years later, it suddenly shows up a lot more? I, I don't get it. It doesn't seem to connect. And also, I don't think, if this was, it'd be very helpful, who could save the town a ton of money. There's two bits of information that weren't reported. Mr. Chenier mentioned yesterday, former airport commissioner, that the state used-
Mr. Palowski.
Please. So even though it can save the town tens of millions of dollars, you don't wanna hear it because of some made-up three-minute rule for tonight.
Is the chairman-
Okay, I might, I could save you ten million, but make, just silence me, just like the other night.
Please, please, please email me those suggestions, and we will-
Maybe the people at town would wanna know it too. I'd sell, you know, a lot of people wanna sell the house, 'cause they're sure-
I will read them. I will read them. But again, I, I want to maintain an orderly meeting.
In the time we just spoke, it could have been-
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Palowski. Are there any other citizens that would like to address the council or are professionals? Please state your name, your address, and please keep it respectful.
Uh, good evening. My name is Tommy Pruitt. I live at one-fifty Clements Hill Road.
I, I'm just gonna need you to speak up a little, right into the mic.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak. Um, my name is Tommy Pruitt. I live at one-fifty Clements Hill Road. I basically just have two questions. My first question is, to you guys, what effect does the drought have on all this testing that we've had? I've heard a lot of conversations going on about water depths, and I'm wondering, I'm just sitting there thinking to myself, I wonder what, what, 'cause right now, we're in a drought, and we've done a lot of testing to prepare this. But when we have, you know, a wetter season, what, what would you expect to see in those results then? That's question one. And my second question is, if the landfill is owned by the town, and it's ultimately the town's responsibility to pay for any cleanup, that ultimately means that it's the citizens' responsibility to clean it up through their tax dollars. So we're gonna monitor the, the landfill for thirty years. All of the reading and research that I've done on landfills tells me that it's not a matter of when, or if they leak, but a matter of when. And so ultimately, what I'm wondering is, why hasn't the expansion of the landfill been put on a ballot? And I don't even know. Has it been put on a, on a local ballot? That was my second question.
I will start answering your second question. That, the expansion of the landfill has never been put on the ballot. Um, and as far as the responsibility in regards to, um, the landfill, the cleanup-
And as far as the responsibility in regards to the landfill, the cleanup, it is state law, DEP requires that these 30 years of testing be done. This is not something that we can control. Whether then DEP says 15 years later, they say, "You gotta do this." Now, we're at the, the, the report of DEP. So therefore, we are following state law, state recommendations to be able to do all that moving forward, whenever the landfill does close and it's capped and it's full to its capacity. But in, as far as that second question, part B, in regards to the expansion of the landfill, that has never been put up to ballot and that's something that could be done if citizens put up the, the signatures. And I can tell you right here, if that was to come to this day, if somebody was to come up here, I would support the, the citizens of Southbridge to vote. And that would be the done deal. Because now you're taking it off nine people that may or may not want it. And let's do what the citizens of Southbridge want. So that's my take on your second question. I'm going to turn it over to Ty and Bond in regards to your first question.
Thank you. We are in a drought and actually, the, the pressure transducers that are in the wells on each foot road and at the landfill, you know, we were, drought's not good, but we were kind of glad that it was this way because this is kind of the worst-case situation. This is the worst, you know, worst-case condition that you could have. And if pumping the wells on each foot road for the people that use that water is not reversing the groundwater gradient, it's not going to happen. We, you know, the transducers track the water elevation constantly. They've been in there for six months, they're in there now, and they're going to stay in there for, I'm not sure how long, but it will continue through the summer anyway. And, you know, the elevations of the water on each foot road are consistently above the elevation of the landfill. So, you know, if it rains more, you know, it's going to rain everywhere conceivably. So, you know, we wouldn't expect the conditions to change any. If anything, it would raise the, raise the water level on each foot road more.
Okay. Just a question.
That's why we're here.
So, how many signatures and what's the timeline to get a ballot going?
That is a question that it's all to registered voters. So I would say anywhere between 600 to 700, but the accurate number you could verify from our town clerk.
Okay, awesome, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other citizens that would like to address the council with questions tonight? Are there other citizens that would like to address the council tonight with questions? Do any of the counselors have any questions that they would like addressed here tonight? Counselor Clements.
Highly irregular, I know it's a hot evening and all, however, there may be a second question that somebody has. And if they can come up and abide by the same logic, I would entertain allowing a second question if the council so would be interested to hear. But that's up to the whole council because you set the rules, we set the rules prior to this.
Counselor Clements is suggesting making a motion to allow citizens to ask a second question that may not have been asked. Do I have a second?
Second.
Simple hand vote will go with this. All those in favor? Unanimous by all presents, if there's any citizens that are in the audience that would like to address the council and our professionals with a second question, please come up, state your name, address. Please keep it respectful and the same three minutes apply.
I just wanted to ask the question that I was trying to ask earlier, I never got out because I got stopped. Since most of us aren't engineers and don't understand half of these graphs and charts and numbers and whatever you're doing with the post thing there, could we maybe ask, I mean, this, I try to be polite about it, but I'm, could we get a, like a chart made that's a lot more simple to, for everybody to understand with elevations, you know, big bright numbers, I don't know, something that's a little more...
If, if I could, Mr. Schimmich. You know, I understand your frustration. Because it took me a while understanding.
Like you said, we don't understand this.
And we did some writing on a, on a blackboard in town and we went through it. And, you know, the issue of the height, which is difficult to understand because of the depth of the well. So, so we understand that, the flow of the water is away from the landfill. There's something called a head and the water pressure that wouldn't allow the water to go uphill that way either. So I would ask, we, we've talked about this a number of times and I know it's difficult for people to understand. So if we can simplify that in some kind of chart, I'd like to have that available because he's 100% right, it, it's difficult for people to understand.
Okay.
And, and I've seen it a bunch of times and I, I've seen that in a chart.
Yeah, I'm, I'm trying to figure him out.
Still, how does this work because I'm not an engineer, right? So, so we'll do that for them, we can put that together.
I know my, I know my two minutes isn't completely up. Uh, my other question, um, we got McKinstry, I guess Pond on one side of landfill. And like I said, I live along Caddybrook, which is very steep grade from the landfill. At what point do we, I mean, are they ever going to be, like, reverse tested eventually? I mean, uh, I, I'm...
Arps?
Yeah, the, the wetlands around the landfill that are immediately surrounding the landfill are sampled quarterly, they're part of the quarterly monitoring program.
Okay.
So those samples are taken, they're analyzed for all the same parameters that the groundwater is.
Okay, so, so I shouldn't, shouldn't be worried at this point on Caddybrook or...
No, I don't think so.
Okay, just asking. Fear that we have.
The cross-section that you asked about is in the report. It, it may not be easy to follow, but it is a, a cross-section, so you can see...
Is that the report that's on the website you had or...
Yeah, it's on the, it's on the DEP website.
Okay.
And it shows the depth of the wells, it shows the, the transducer data. So you can see, you know, as the wells pump, you can see the water level drop and come back up and drop and come back up as it cycles. All that's in there and I guess we could deal with it in the future, if you look at it.
Just to understand it, I've read through that report, a lot of it is reasonably easy to understand. There are sections that are difficult. And if you don't have an engineering background, it's, there's some charts and things that are difficult. But you can read that report and get a pretty good understanding of what's going on at that landfill.
Okay, all right, I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Butler. Are there any other citizens that would like to address the council and our consultants? Please state your name, address, please keep it respectful.
I appreciate the opportunity for another three minutes. Kevin Buckson, 28 Columbus Avenue. I realize Ty and Bond's position on this specific matter was very specific. But overall, is Ty, is it Ty and Bond's position to, to say that the structure and position and location of the present-day Southbridge landfill would be a, a chosen site by your firm if it were back in 1978 when it originally was implemented?
I think the way to, is the microphone on?
Yes.
I think the way to answer that is, the Commonwealth has what's known as site assignment regulations, uh, site suitability regulations that go through and determine where it's appropriate to put landfills today. We, that is a, uh, it's part of the regulations that's been established. The site was placed there before those regulations were put in place. So I, I would need to go back through all, we would need to, as a firm, to go back through all those to determine whether or not it's in, you know, would meet today's regulations. It, it is sited on top of glacial till, which at the time that it was sited, that was a preferred area to place landfills on top of glacial till deposits because it was believed that the glacial till provided an impermeable service. So at the time, I believe it was, you know, a, a desired location at the time.
So in, in layman's terms, would I be correct in stating that by today's standards, it would not be an appropriate location for a landfill?
I didn't say that, I said that one would need to go through and determine to look at the calculate, to look at the, the regulations to see whether its location as it is today would meet the today's regulations.
All right, second question. Given the present situation of the landfill, would you recommend a massive expansion on top of the online sections?
Unfortunately, that is not a question that we're talking about. We're not going to talk about anything that has to do with expansion because that's not what we're talking about here tonight.
Someday, we will have those discussions.
And just to clarify, that's not even something that our consultants would answer. That question would go before the state DEP and our Board of Health, so that would not be something that our consultants would desire.
Well, those are important questions and, and we will be answering them sooner or later.
I think, Mr. Buckson, I think you've heard the, the desire of this council on numerous occasions in regards to each, everyone's opinion in regards to expansion. But again, expansion does not come to us, it goes to site assignment and it goes also to our Board of Health.
I'm sorry to say that one of the responses from this council and from the manager is it's a bad contract and there's nothing we can do about it.
That, for me? Mr. Schimmich, are you referring to me, Kevin, or some other former town manager? I'm sorry? And you're not speaking for me, I hope, because I've never said that.
You decline, you decline that you've, you don't consider this a, a less than desirable contract? That the contract itself?
We have a contract in place, I've never said if it's bad or good. I've said we have to follow the contract, just to be clear.
And Mr. Buckson, now, the questions are out of context tonight. Thank you. Before the next speaker, I have Counselor McKenzie.
Yes, um, I'm understanding many of the concepts that you're discussing and that you're showing us, but I have to agree with the gentleman who was up previous about understanding all of it clearly. I like the idea that he suggested clearer, easier-to-understand charts. But I also like, would like to see, uh, number one, a glossary of definitions of some of the terms that are used. And I would also like to see, and I would also like to see, uh, American language in some of these descriptions and terms. Because reading it myself, uh, I had trouble following it. And, uh, like, I'm not the brightest, shiniest apple in the tree, so I really need help as well.
Thank you, Counselor Clements.
Thank you. When the previous speaker was asking about glacier and all that good wonderful stuff, is my understanding, and maybe I'm wrong, but I've been told too, a lot of clay exists in that area, correct? And that clay is some sort of natural liner tech? In the old days, I mean, they, there were sites, as you said, suitability, that type of thing. Yeah, I'm just curious because that, I didn't hear about glacier, glacier tills, but I have heard about clay and that was one of the reasons our landfill was, our, our landfill, the, you know, the initial was sited back in 70s, I guess, as it was stated. I'm not aware of that, but so could you respond?
Glacial till is a very tight soil that packs together tight. It does not meet the standards of clay, but it's, it's the next step would be clay. So glacial till, um, like the drumlins on Boston Harbor, they're very, um, low-transmissive soils, that the, the water does not travel through the glacial till like it does not travel through clay. So in the 70s, it was a preferred soil to use at the bottom of a liner system, at the bottom of a landfill.
And I get, I have to say this because I think we get a bad rap on the expansion versus maximization. We talk about, I think, everybody refers to what's going on with slivers and triangles as expansion, yet it's within the footprint, so I'm just going to make that statement. The expansion that I talk about, or I, I put my name to not agreeing with, is the McKinstry expansion. And I think, you know, I'm not, I don't speak for anybody else but myself. So what, what's going on with existing footprint and our, what is in our contract, um, I believe is what's been sort of alluded to, but I could be wrong. But for statement purposes, for me personally, um, there's a maximization to what we are already doing within the contract. And then there's an expansion component that apparently Casella may want to, to seek out with, um, the McKinstry property, but that's, that's a whole different ballgame. So just, just clarify that maybe the train of thought that's going through here between the differences as to existing and, and potential. That's all.
Thank you. Are there any other citizens that would like to address the council? Please state your name, address. You will have the same amount of time, please keep it respectful.
John Palowski, 3 Genesee Street. The two pieces of information I wanted to share, I'm just going to get out quick and I'm going to ask a quick question. George Chenier, last night, in a Facebook post on Focus on Southbridge, volunteered some information that I loved because it could shift all the blame to the state and take it away from both Casella and the town. You never heard me come up here putting down Casella. I've, I'm a Christian, I've said if Jesus and the 12 apostles were up there, they couldn't stop contamination without miracles. It's not Casella. If the town was up there running the place, I'd probably be griping about the town. But what he had mentioned, there was an herbicide used. Now herbicides, I'm not saying it was Agent Orange, but these things have, Agent Orange had dioxin. And a lot of herbicides today also have dioxin. And I'm not a chemist, but it looks to me like dioxin and this 1-4 dioxane, they're not even close? Okay, because the state sprayed the area to kill trees. And if it possibly broke things down, because I don't buy this thing that could have been a tractor that was buried a long time ago, but the state spraying in the last 15 years? To me, ah, maybe, maybe things break down. You know, maybe there's a little chemistry that goes on. When you put all those chemicals in there and you mix them up, you get new chemicals that were never put in there, you know? I mean, it's just the nature of the big mixing bowl. So that might be, you're shaking, maybe it's useless information. The other piece of information, we had that big old fire up there years ago. There's a lot of town's fire departments. And when people talk about the fire, that's the one we tend to think of. But there was another fire shortly after that. And our Southbridge Fire Department didn't get too involved in it. They brought in a firefighting firm from California to put it out. And there's something in the telegram about our fire chief at the time reporting to our esteemed town council that they were closing that cell down. So although you were pointing out that there were certain cells, you know, I'm just a amateur, but when I ask myself, why would they shut a cell down? Because it has millions of dollars in revenue. I'm wondering, could the fire have, and they don't use water to put those hot fires out, they use things that are wetter than water and chemicals. Could one of those constituents possibly? So it may not be the online parts of the tank. And as we know from the testimony, from the site assignment, all liners leak anyway. Some of those single liners could be leaking. But specifically that fire, you may not have been informed of that. It's not, it's not something, it was only from a clever person who spends a lot of time doing research that that was brought to my attention. But that might be worth looking into. And the question I want to leave you with, if you dump four billion pounds of contaminated soil and garbage on top of a water table, which is about what we have up there, give or take a billion pounds, could all that weight upon the water table possibly cause water to flow differently? Could that make the, could that change the flow of the water in a way where water could possibly go uphill a bit because of all the weight? And that's all I wanted to ask right now, because I haven't read the entire report. Uh, Counselor Clements, thank you for your idea of letting us come back up and speak. That was very, very conservative of you, thank you.
Either Mr. Murphy or Mr. Arps can answer that question in regards to the weight.
I would just say that, I would just say that all the work that's been done has been done under the current conditions. You know, what you're speaking of sounds like, you know, if you dropped a bowling ball in a bathtub, you'd have a wave that goes out. You know, this deposition has occurred at a very slow rate over many, many years. I don't, I don't, I can't think that that would actually happen. And like I said, you know, the current study's been done under the current conditions. So if that, if that was happening, we would see it.
Are there any other citizens that would like to address the council? Please state your name, address, please keep it respectful.
Thanks for letting me speak again, Tommy Pruitt, 150 Clement Hill Road. I just have a quick question. So I'm not an expert in geophysics or anything like that, but my, my question that I'm just sitting over here wondering is when we put all this weight on these plates, is there, do we risk anything? Like, with any shifting, moving? Because there's a lot of weight going on that. And, I mean, what, what do the studies show about our plates in this area? How, how would that affect this water flow?
Can you clarify what you mean by plates?
Like earthquakes, like...
Yeah, kinda, you know, I mean, I've lived in other parts of the country where the buildings start rocking.
Yeah, I, I can't imagine that the landfill would have, I mean, that's a whole different scale. I, I can't imagine it would have any impact.
Nothing, okay. Just a question, that's it.
Thank you. Can, for the record, can I just get your last name? Because I couldn't hear it.
P-R-U-I-T-T.
P...
P-R-U-I-T-T.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other citizens that would like to... Is there any other citizens that would like to address the council? Please state your name, address. Keep your respectful. Is there any counselors that would like to address our consultants with a question? Counselor Clements.
Thank you. Now that, since that segment's over, I, first of, I want to say that I appreciate the fact that people came out, you know, it is a very warm evening, probably people out there swimming and doing other things, but your concern for the community, and I can appreciate that, which is why it was important to be able to speak longer. But frankly, I have to say that it disturbs me a bit that we're doing our due diligence. We've got professionals doing their due diligence. Everyone is doing their due diligence, and we're so focused at pointing the finger at us, at Southbridge, our own citizens, at us, that I don't hear anybody questioning these people about their findings as to where it's really coming from. Does not anybody care where it's really coming from? Because I do, because potentially we could be downhill from that. So I appreciate all the work that's being done, and maybe something else will happen that will change that, and we will be, you know, who knows what's going to happen. But I'm concerned, as I've been right along, where it's coming from. Our landfill, where it fall, great. But in, in light of all the information, aren't we concerned about where it's coming from? And shouldn't we be asking the state somebody to, to really make sure we find that out? Because isn't that what it's all about? Not laying the blame just on us and Casella or whatever, but on actually where it's coming from? So sitting up here for seven years, I just had to say that. I do, you opened a lot of questions. It was great. But I am really concerned that nobody, nobody said, "Hey, what have you found and why do you think it's not, why do you think it's somebody else? Why are there four other potential contamination sites coming to South, towards Southbridge?" That's what I'm worried about. That's all.
Thank you. Is there any other comments, questions? Counselor McKenzie?
I'll try to make this brief. One of the things that I think Counselor Clements hit upon that I have to agree with, and that is that rather than point the finger at the council, I think what we all need to do, and I liked, one of the gentlemen, one of the first gentlemen that got up, I can't remember his name, but he got up and he, he was very respectful, very polite, like, what can we do together to solve the problems that we're going through on this fill, landfill? Asking questions that would help us understand things, that's what we really want to do. We want to work together as a community. We don't want to be divided. And if we're looking to solve problems here in Southbridge, we need to do so as an entire community, not as a divided pro-con kind of a thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McKenzie. Mr. San Angelo.
So let's just be clear, because I want to make it clear, and both the counselors have made good points. A big part of this discussion today was on getting access to other locations. DEP has made it very clear to us that they're willing to do that, to look at other potential sources. So that, that's one. Two, and, and I'm not anyway wanting to defend Casella, they can do it themselves, but Casella has no obligation to prove that the contamination is coming from somewhere else. They have an obligation to prove that it's not coming from our landfill. But they have come to the table with DEP today and said to DEP that if they get access, keep in mind that these, these lands are not Southbridge Town property, we can just go on. They belong to private individuals or company. And we need DEP to get that access because we don't have that ability, and Casella doesn't have that ability. But Casella has said they would work with DEP to look at some of these sites, as well as, we've offered Ty and Bond to review that, to look at some of these other potential sites as well. So there is an interest by DEP in that. They are moving forward to get us that access. Casella has stepped up and is willing to contribute to that, as well as we are willing to contribute that. But that comes with some cost limitations. We can't spend millions of dollars on some property that's not ours, right? So we said that clearly to DEP today, that we're willing to help, but recognize that it's not our end responsibility, Town of Southbridge, to prove where it's coming from and to spend money testing on land in Charlton. That's not our, our problem.
Thank you. I just want to, before we adjourn tonight, I just want to let the public know and those that are here that are in attendance, what my plan will be moving forward. We will revisit this issue in 30 to 45 days as soon as we get a response back from DEP. At that point, we as a council will come back, look at their findings, and make a statement on how to move forward and how we are going to be proactive or ask more questions. And, and we have to wait until DEP's response. They have requested time to be able to review this report. Again, we will continue to keep a transparent process. I will come back and have another special council of the whole meeting to make sure that we are a unified front. We understand what's going on because this is a major, major component to our community. But this is not the only component of our community. We have other issues that we have to continue to tackle. We have other items that we need to continue to build on, and we have to continue to move Southbridge forward regardless of what's happening up on that hill. Because there's citizens, there's children that we have to look forward. Again, not minimizing the problem, but understanding that right now, we have to await a decision from DEP. So with that said, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor? Unanimous, good night. Thank you for being here.